Good evening. It is 6:00 PM. This is the Sandwich School Committee meeting of October 23rd, 2024. This is a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast live on livestream on www.sandwichtv.org and being recorded for Sandwich Community Television Education Channel Number Eight. We'll begin as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America. It's a symbol of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is our first public forum of the evening. Would anybody like to, if you're going to come forward to public evening, if you haven't already, I would ask that you sign in just with your name and address. And just a reminder, public forum is kind of a one-way channel. We listen, we can't necessarily respond to it. And you'll have five minutes. If you get close to that, I'll let you know. And please just begin with your name and street.
Okay. My name is Sharon Kesmarzak. I live at 70 Old Fields Road in Sandwich. And my concern this evening is about the locked classroom door policy. I have been involved in the school system for 30 years, counting time when my children started school and was a volunteer, and then went into my substituting. And my children, my two grandchildren also have attended Sandwich Schools. I have some learning concerns about the new locked door policy in each classroom. My grandson, who is in first grade, had an interesting comment to a question I asked him the other day about the locked classroom doors. He said, "Having the door locked disturbed his learning. When the children knock on the door to be let into the room after leaving for bathroom visits and special class visits, he said that his work is interrupted and his writing gets messed up." These were his words. And I do witness this myself in classrooms. I substitute every day at Oak Ridge. I know there is a good reason for having the classrooms locked all the time, but having this procedure is another way to interrupt the teachers' teaching and our children's learning. Because whenever I'm in the classroom, it happens multiple times. Sometimes I feel like I'm a door guard, opening and closing the door so that the kids don't have to, if I'm an aide in the classroom, so that the kids aren't interrupted. I try and go past that. We need to go back to the magnets on the door jamb, which gave classes a safety measure if a lockdown was necessary, and I feel it did not interfere with the learning procedure. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Would anybody else like to speak at public forum? Seeing none, next up is a donation from Stop &amp; Shop to Sandwich Partners for Families.
So once again, I think you have in your packet a form for a donation from Stop &amp; Shop. I believe what they do is they give their giving tag bags to new families within the community. So it's kind of, there isn't specifically a monetary amount, but it is a series of the giving tag bags.
Entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the donation from Stop &amp; Shop to the Sandwich Partners for Families. Second.
And what's the value on the motion and a second? Any discussion?
What is the value?
I'm just trying to make sure, is it? Okay, I can't tell if it's $3 or $300.
I think it's $300.
Regardless.
It'd be $300.
Got it, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 6-0. And thank you, appreciation to Stop &amp; Shop on behalf of the Sandwich Partners for Families. Next up is review and act on the minutes of a regular business meeting dated October 9th, 2024.
I make a motion that we approve the regular business meeting minutes from October 9th, 2024. Second.
Motion by Ms. Menendez, second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? 5-0-1 with Ms. Adams abstaining. Next up is the executive session meeting minutes of, also of October 9th, 2024.
I make a motion we approve the executive session meeting minutes from October 9th, 2024. And if you could pass them back when you're done reviewing them.
Motion by Ms. Menendez.
Second.
Second. By Ms. Goodwin, excuse me. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 4-0-2. Okay. If everybody could return those, that'd be great. Give those back to you. Next up is correspondence and announcements. I have none. No correspondence was passed to me by the chair.
I just have one announcement. Saturday, November 2nd, from 12:00 to 1:30 at the Sandwich Community Radio Station, they're going to be holding an open house for all students and their families in the Sandwich Schools for any student interested in learning how to become a DJ and how a radio station works. Saturday, November 2nd, there'll be pizza, and it'll be about an hour and a half or so, 12:00 to 1:30. And it's located in the industrial park in the Sandwich Community Television Building.
If I could just add on that, we are now really closely partnering with Sandwich Community Radio. So that Sandwich Community Radio and WSDH 91.5 will be simulcast. And the intention is not only to have folks in the community doing their shows, but really to revitalize what we've done with regard to radio club. So getting students involved, particularly at the middle school and high school level, is really critical.
Question. They're going to broadcast, how many hours a day?
I believe it's 24 hours.
Okay. That's great, because then you don't have to be at a computer to hear it. You can be in your car.
Yep.
That sounds great.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none. Next up is the presentation of the Mass Certificate of Academic Excellence.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. So each year, my professional organization, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, or MAS, allows all 291 districts across the Commonwealth to recognize one student per district with the MASSS Certificate of Academic Excellence. And it usually occurs now in the fall. This annual award honors seniors across the state who have demonstrated distinguished academic performance, but also personal contributions to the high school community. This year, I'm really pleased to award this certificate to Will Lodge of the Class of 2025. Just a few words about Will. Will is an excellent student, as throughout his entire tenure at Sandwich Middle High School, he's challenged himself with honors and AP-level coursework. He's also been a member of the high school soccer and baseball teams, as well as student council. However, if you know Will, he really, really shines in the performing arts. This young man during his high school years has sung in the chorus, and during the last three, has been an integral member of both Sandwich Soul and Knights Theater Company. In fact, with Sandwich Soul this year, he's currently a section leader. And with the Knights Theater Company, he is co-president. He's been selected as a member of the Massachusetts Southeast District Choir, the Massachusetts All Cape Choir over the past three school years. Over the past two years, if you've had the good fortune of seeing our KTC Spring Productions, he has served as a lead in 2023 as Angelus in Les Misérables. And again, I can't stop ranting about this in the role of Roger in this past spring's production of Rent. In both productions, his performances were truly a tour de force, so much so that last spring, Will was invited to audition for the Jimmy Awards, a national musical theater competition that recognizes exemplary student performances. But I think in the big picture, all of that is very, very important. But getting to know Will over the last three school years as a member of the Superintendent's Advisory Council, something that he's been a member since the seventh grade, is really the thing that impresses me the most. Will is a young man who, in my opinion, is a model for his peers. Because not only does he have a passion for improvement and learning, but really making the middle high school a better, more inclusive school community. So please, join me in congratulating Will for being this year's recipient of the MASSS Academic Excellence Certificate.
You don't get out of here without a picture. Indeed, congratulations and well done. Unless there's an objection, I'd like to make one modification to the order of the agenda. I'd like to bring Mr. Donovan up to talk about the athletic department update, only because there's active games going on at the high school, and I'll allow him to get back to the girls' soccer senior night. You can thank me later.
Good evening. Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it.
No problem.
So, give you an update on the fall and how things are doing. Kevin's right, I just left the Decanto Stadium. Our field hockey team won. Again, they beat Cohast to 2-0, so they're going to remain undefeated. They're ranked first in Division III for field hockey. So they're one of the teams that's going to be moving on into the postseason. So that was a great win, and then JV field hockey was on after, and then senior night for our girls' soccer team, in which eight seniors are being honored tonight. So when I was leaving, they had the whole place decorated, and they were ready to go, and they're playing Rockland tonight. So it'll be a nice one under the lights, so we were able to get everything in. So yeah, hopefully I'll be able to get back in time for kickoff, or I think pretty close to kickoff. So I put a few slides together just with a couple of things to update for the fall, for how things are going and where we were. We had a total of 355 students registered for our fall sports. Cross-country, that's for boys and girls, that's at 17. Boys' soccer was the freshman JV and varsity. It was mostly sort of a, freshman JV was sort of combined with the JV team, so it was at 44. A girls' soccer, which was freshman JV and varsity, for a total of 55. We had a middle school boys and girls soccer team with 28 students. They got in, or they're going to get in, probably eight to 10 games. I would have liked more. There were some cancellations and some rainouts, but we were able to get those in. And those, we were able to play either at the high school, on Fenton, or in the upper field, or over at the wing. So the maintenance crew, in particular, Brian Ray and Chad Shaw doing an amazing job with keeping the fields up and lined and checking in with everything. So those guys are always on top of it in giving our kids a chance to play. And so middle school typically is over, they were over the wing this afternoon playing against Plum salt Middle School. Football, we were at 50. As you know, in football, there's a lot of injuries that can occur, so the numbers are down a little bit, but they're having a great year. Field hockey, good numbers there at 39. Golf was at 19 players. That was JV and varsity. And volleyball was at 45 with freshman JV and varsity. And I think even cooler about this is the instructional volleyball, which is at 27. So shows sort of that importance of the feeder programs and introducing the students to that. And our freshman coach is doing the instructional volleyball. That's about an hour a week after school. We try and do it on the half-days, but it's gone to some Mondays as well. And then strength and conditioning is at 25 students for the middle school. And we had league champions for golf and for field hockey. And we have golf, and field hockey, and volleyball have already gotten into the tournament. It looks like football will be able to get into the, I guess, what is the playoffs now for the MIA? And girls' soccer, don't think is going to make it. Boys' soccer, I think has to go on a run, but I'm not exactly positive. Plus, you have to look at what happens at the end when we look at the power rankings and things. So a really good fall. The weather has been, you know, it's beautiful out there tonight, so it's cooperated for the most part, so we've been able to get a lot of our games in. So it's been a great fall. For me, it was just nice coming in and knowing just even what the fields were. Like last year, I didn't even know what Fenton Field was, or when they were like, "You could play at the wing." I had no idea where these places were, so at least having some context this year has been good, so.
So Sean, if I could just insert for a second. So with 355 students, doing some quick math, as I just did on my iPhone, that represents 39.7%.
Okay.
Just about 40% of our students are participating in a fall sport. And I call that to the attention of the committee, because again, the mantra has been, "Doing what we can to maximize participation," so.
Yeah, and I.
Fully noted.
Yeah, no, thanks. And I think that's.
He knew I was going to ask that question, did he?
Yeah. It's a lot of our kids playing two and three seasons, multiple seasons, so multi-sport athletes and multi- oh, he's not here. But kids that are just doing multiple things, like, you know, participating in performing arts, participating in clubs, participating in sports. So they're busy, and they're doing a lot, and they're making us proud out there in terms of what they're doing, so. Okay, so maybe the elephant in the room, or?
Just a real quick comment, if you go back. And if anybody has a specific comment on the numbers. I think this is fantastic, because, you know, all the way down to the middle school. And I remember being the middle school parent, and you hear periodically that sometimes, you know, "Why aren't there more games?" Sometimes it's finding that competition, and I heard you say that. But the fact that we have this level of participation and our kids are active is just fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's always something going on, which is nice.
I'm sorry, Bert.
And I saw the power rankings, football was number one, at least in the Cape Cod time.
Oh, for the Cape Cod League, for the Cape Cod schools, yeah.
For the Cape Cod schools. I have one question. I was at the Sandwich Recreation Commission, and they said, and I don't know how accurate this is, they said that they have a lot of trouble getting people to sign up for their department in tennis, because the courts are in poor condition. Is that true?
Our tennis courts? Yes. They could use work. Yes. Danielle was aware. They could, yeah. It's great we have lights there, but we run into issues with other teams coming and issues and concerns from them with cracks in the court. And I know for some schools, they can come in, and, you know, for some coaches, it's, hey, we're, you know, let's just play, it's, you know, at least they're out there playing. But I know there's some really competitive kids, and, you know, that's probably one of those sports that it doesn't have a ton of eyeballs on it. So it's like, you know, we'll make do, but it's pretty glaring.
Is there anything that can, what can be done to alleviate that situation?
Well, filling the cracks wouldn't help, so I think we would need a whole new surface.
Is that on the calendar or anything?
It's in the 10-year capital plan that we've shared.
10 years?
Well, it's a 10-year capital plan that details what our priorities are.
Do you have any idea how much money this is involved in?
Off the top of my head, no, but it is a significant expense.
Okay. You get a lot of complaints from other schools?
It's more anecdotal, you know what I mean? I think at your tennis, what I found with the programs and with coaches, you have coaches that are very into tennis. Tennis is your thing, do you know what I mean? Whereas other schools, it might be, they were just lucky to get somebody that could help out. So I think in the situations where people are very passionate about it, and not to belittle the others, they have an issue with the fact that there's cracks in the.
How many courts are there?
Eight or 10?
So you couldn't go down for, you couldn't go down for the center?
I can't remember, Danielle.
Can't either. I haven't been over there in a while.
Three, three? See the six altogether, or eight altogether, I believe?
There's only two down at the center for weekday living. Yeah, it's weekday living.
Maybe we could do a follow-up on this one at a future meeting.
That would be great.
Yeah. Thanks, Bert.
I just had a question about the instructional volleyball. Is that the same as the unified volleyball, or is that separate?
Separate.
Okay, so we might have more athletes playing.
Yeah, so we have, yeah. Mia Mulcahy is a student, is sort of the student ambassador for instruction for unified volleyball, and Jen Strano helps out as the faculty advisor on that. And they get in, they try and get in once a week, and just giving those kids an opportunity to be involved, and they do an awesome job.
A lot of these other sports have feeder youth programs. There's not many youth volleyball programs, so that's feeder for the high school.
Yeah, yeah. Which is great to see, and they're having success this year with the new coach. And, you know, so I think you, you know, it sort of lends itself to more kids participating because they're seeing success.
Okay. I'll just leave it down.
That's okay. So one of the things, obviously, I think when I came in was, I heard a lot of like, "When are we going back to the Cape and Islands? When are we going back to Cape and Islands?", that type of thing. And interestingly enough, I was approached by the Cape and Islands, because Barnstable is leaving the Cape and Islands League. They're joining with, I think it's Attleboro and Dartmouth, but I'm not 100% sure. And they had asked us if we would be interested in joining back into the Cape and Islands. Anecdotally, talking to my coaches, listening to even athletes, listening to parents, a lot of them were interested or were wondering if we would ever be able to get back to the Cape and Islands League. So I'm in the process now of getting in the paperwork and sort of moving that process forward of if everything would work out of moving Sandwich back into the Cape and Islands League and not of the South Shore League. What has to happen first is I need to get approval from the Cape and Islands, and then I would ask for relief from the South Shore League. It can't go the other way, because I would want to ask for relief, they give it to me, and then we have nowhere to go. So you almost have to like feel wanted first, and then you follow the other steps. So I'm in the process of doing that. I've already written a letter that needs to be written and with Jeannie, and sent that over to the administrators in charge of the Cape and Islands League. I had a conversation with the South Shore League in our last league meeting, and all the athletic directors got it, they understood it. They understood why we would be going back. There's a lot of reasons why. I didn't get a ton of pushback from them, meaning, you know, they got it. They were like, "All right, it makes sense, you know." Randolph and Hull, I'm sure they may be glad to not have to come down. You know, like, "We're playing Rockland tonight, and that's a 6:30, 6:45 start. That's going to be a long night for them getting back." And not that it won't have long nights, I think, when we're back, but I think it may cut down on some of those. So I had just sort of taken down some notes that I was keeping along the way of sort of the rationale behind it. So we were asked, I got verbal approval from the South Shore League when I approached it at the meeting, feedback from my coaching staff. I sent out a survey to all of them at the end of each season last year, asking about, "What did you like? What didn't you like? What did you think of the travel? What did you think of facilities? How were the teams? How were the coaches?" And you got a mixed bag. And then I flat-out asked them not too long ago, if given the opportunity. And it had 19 out of the 22 said they would want to, said they would want to go back of the 22 coaches that were, that are still on staff. Building administration is on board, in terms of the people that I'm working with. We still have, sailing and girls' hockey is still in the Cape and Islands. Most of the middle school games I'm scheduling are still with Cape and Islands teams. It's Matakees, and it's with Barnstable, and it's with Nauset, it's with Monamoy, it's with the Nantucket. We're still playing them in a lot of middle school sports, so I'm in contact with those athletic directors already. And this gives us a chance to still maintain relationships with the South Shore League, which has very good teams and would still be willing to play us in games, I'm sure. We're not leaving on bad terms or negative terms. They get it, they understand it. And we're leaving in time for the fall of 2025 schedules to still be built without us sort of ducking out at the last minute, because if that had happened, they would have the ability to keep us for, I think it's, two more years. And so that would be, that would be some choppy waters there. So this gives us time for Cape and Islands League games to be scheduled, and then for the South Shore League to schedule games. It would even out their league with five and five teams, as opposed to six and five, which is what it is now. So I can keep you updated on that, or feel free, if you have any questions about that.
I know this was before you, but can you help us recall if you know why we switched to South Shore League in the first place? And what would be the advantages of, what are the advantages of one or the other besides the travel and the cost of travel and distance and time?
So I really honestly can't speak to the reasons why, because I've heard a lot of different ones. And I think one of the reasons, I think, was for more consistent scheduling with teams in a league that has, you know, a freshman JV and varsity level within a lot of their programs. That's what I was, that's one of the things that I heard, Joe.
Yeah, at the time, the rationale was around inconsistencies where there's, you know, the larger school division of the Cape and the Islands. Think about, you know, obviously Barnstable, Nauset, us, Dartmouth. But then the smaller schools, like the Sturgis Schools, or, you know, St. John Paul II and so on. But also concerns about inconsistencies and instabilities of programs. You know, for example, one year, Nauset said, "We don't have enough players to field the basketball team." Sorry. So some concerns about that management piece. But one of the biggest concerns, and I think, you know, it's one of the bullet points here, was Barnstable. That you're talking about a high school of about 1,600 students. Some real concerns, particularly in the area of football, where our kids would play them, and because you're talking about a much larger student population, much larger kids and so on, real concerns about injuries that were occurring. So I think them moving out to kind of this independent league of similar-sized schools kind of facilitates us going back to the Cape and the Islands.
I think there are also, excuse me, frog in the throat tonight. When this did happen, and just for context, this is a principal decision. We don't actually vote on this, but the former chair, Don DiDaco, was obviously interested, so he and I sat on some meetings. There was some concern about maybe some other teams within the league might be looking elsewhere as well, but I think that is stabilized, so those concerns are not what they were. And also that there's a team in another league that might consider coming back. Whether that happens or not, who knows, but that's a potential. The, so, anyway.
Yeah, no, so that's sort of what I had, and I came in sort of like, "All right, this is what we have. We're playing in the South Shore League." I knew a lot of. have. We're playing in the South Shore League. I knew a lot of the athletic directors there and a lot of the coaches. And I knew they had good programs and good teams and they welcomed us. It was a, it was a great experience. Our teams did, did really well. But I think, I think the travel was a little tricky for them too. There was a lot of schools that their dismissal times were later than ours and you tack on a 45, you know, or an hour long ride from Randolph or even Cohasset to get here. It's, it's not that, that easy. So I think that was another part of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On that, do you happen to remember ballpark, what the, I know, I know when we moved to that league, we talked about, because our, where our equities do come in is obviously, you know, student learning time or in this case, study time in the evenings, but also budgetary. The travel, what was the travel difference?
I think it was at least like 20% more.
To go to-
To go to-
Longer rides and so the longer, you're paying the bus drivers long. Now we are going to be, we'll be buying some ferry tickets that we didn't buy last year.
Yeah, yeah. And again, that's, you know, I, I know that I didn't have that, that context coming in and, you know, you know, that's, that's certainly going to be, be a part of it. But our coaches seem to be, you know, again, anecdotally excited and looking forward to it. And the Cape and Islands is excited about having us back. So hopefully we can make it all, we can make it all work.
I think it'll be in many cases easier for parents to actually make away games. I periodically work off Cape and I've been able to strategically schedule my life that way to make some away games, but it's hard for a lot of people to do so.
Yeah.
Because you're talking 45 minutes upper at three. Any other questions on that? Okay. Back to you, sir.
Sure. And then the last part was, so this, this in a lot of ways was more difficult than I thought it was going to be. And then in a lot of ways, I was really happy with how, how things have gone and how things are going. So I had wanted our student athletes this fall to take three free online classes through NFHS, focusing on sportsmanship, proper social media use and hazing prevention. And so the rollout process was longer than I, than I would have thought or longer than I expected. I didn't take into account, we have to get all the students registered for the sports. Now I have to get all of the student emails. I have to make sure that the emails that I'm sending can get to them. I have to make sure that the courses can get to their student emails because oftentimes things that we send out from, out of, you know, from another site or something may get blocked. So they, they may not get through to the, to the students. So the, the preparation and sort of the lead up time was more than I would have expected. Like I thought I could create a bank of them all and they could log in and then they'd be able to, to take them. And then when I talked to NFHS, they were like, no, the best thing to do is to, is for you to order all of the online courses, get all the emails and then push them out to the, to the students. So we ended up doing that. We ended up pushing out 355. 100% would have been amazing. I think 92% is really good in terms of, in terms of the response from the students. You guys know as well as I do, like, they don't check all of their emails, no matter how many things we send out. And I was really happy with the response. I was happy with if a kid had forgotten and I had emailed them or I saw them in the hall or just the other night I saw one of the kids at the soccer game and he's like, "I have it. I have to send you the screenshots." And that's what most of them did. Most of them would send me a proof of completion with their name and it would be three screenshots of the courses that they had taken. And I have a spreadsheet and I'm just keeping track of, of all the students and all the courses that they're, that they're taking. So rollout was a little bit longer, had to work with them, just regular issues with the Chromebook of kids being able to log in. I, that's just a screenshot of some of the information that I had sent out to them in terms of how to, how to do it. And then I sent them a follow-up email with like a code that they have to use. They came to my office. I know some coaches did it as part of a practice, you know, like, hey, today you can work on, you know, you have an hour, we're going to work on this or work on your courses. So I felt the coaches were extremely supportive. I didn't get any pushback from any students, any coaches. Nobody was like, "Why am I doing this? I don't want to do this." I explained to them the reasons, the reason or reasons why we were doing it. And in a lot of ways, especially with the sportsmanship course, I didn't know this, but if a student, if a student athlete gets disqualified from a game, they're required to take that sportsmanship course. So we already have our students who have taken that course, because these are not required courses. I called the NFHS and they hadn't heard of any athletic department having any students take any of these courses. So the fact that ours, the large majority are taking them, I think is, is great. And I think it just makes it easier for me moving forward in terms of if there's others that I want to add. They have ones on the dangers of vaping, ones on, more on social media, ones on name, image and likeness. Like there's a lot of different ones and some you have to pay for and a lot of them are free. And they, it's almost like those courses, you know, you watch the video, you answer a few questions and you go to the next slide. So again, I think that was the best part is just not one kid came and was like, "I don't want to do it. Why am I doing this? I don't get why." Not one kid the whole time. A lot of ones that are, that are missing is like, it could be a seventh grader, an eighth grader, or a kid who might not be playing a sport anymore, or they had originally signed up for a sport, but they're not doing the sport anymore. So yeah, I've been, I've been pleasantly, pleasantly surprised. And I'd see no reason why I couldn't roll it into the winter for any students that weren't able to take it into the, into the fall. It'll take some cross-referencing and I'm sure I'm going to get some emails from kids like, "I did it already," but I'll have to just go through the student emails and then who's, I mean, it's going to be a lot of the same kids that sign up for the winter sports that played a fall sport. We have so much turnover. Yeah.
So it's just once a year, just one time a year, the student, the athlete has to participate in this?
Yep, yep. So if they take it like, because they don't, like those don't change if I wanted to add more like next year? I could do that.
And I know some coaches had instilled a no-play deadline. I, I don't know if it was across the board. I don't think it was, but I have heard that, that there was, if you don't have it done by Monday, you can't play.
Yep. And I know they made it like, I know a lot of them did make it part of, like I say, part of their practice.
It should be across the board. Absolutely. Important.
Mm-hmm. And I think it's just, you know, again, making them aware, keeping them cognizant of it, keeping it at the forefront, I think is important. That's all I had, I think.
Any questions on that?
Just, just one question. What kind of training have the coaches been going through, if you could explain that?
So all of them, so NFHS also does a coaching, does a coaching course. So they all have, if they're certified teachers, they are already enrolled in the NFHS, NFHS program. So they've already had that. If they were hired before 2005, they've already had that training. Any of the new coaches that I've hired either have taken it or they have until year two to get their NFHS certification. I have another one that I'm going to do that's specifically relating to, relating to coaches that deals with, it's almost like focused on like locker room and locker room supervision that I can, that I'm going to be able to, to push out to, to them. So nothing other than the NFHS, which is part of their regular certification that they would have for coaches.
And just for, NFHS is the National Federation of High Schools. It's the governing body for all high school sports. Just to use, to explain the acronym.
Sorry, yeah.
No, it's all right. Any other questions? I just, I think this is great. I would love to see that, like Ms. Benunda, 200%. And maybe, I know there's the learning curve and there's that gap between the seasons. So if kids sign up, maybe they can be front-loaded and do this before the practices start.
Yep.
And thank you for all your efforts on this.
No problem.
Elba's. This is a good one.
For new coaches, is it required that they-
So the, the MIA has, I think they give them a two-year window to go through the certification process. We don't have a, we don't have a requirement, but as part of their contract that they're signing, the stipulations in there in terms of locker room supervision and, you know, how they're treating and, and working with our athletes are, you know, in there already. Yeah. So there's no specific course that they have to take before getting, before getting hired, other than the NFHS, which is, like I said, I can, I can, there's one that they can do that is they don't have to pay for it, but it doesn't work for the full certification. Sure.
Any other questions?
There was just one comment. At a recent CPAC meeting with BJ McNamara, he had mentioned about there's a new family portal that's going into place and talking about kids with disabilities and that are playing athletics within the school district, that there are opportunities on this new portal for coaches to take some PD about, about athletes with disability.
Yeah. Okay. I'll reach out to BJ. Yeah.
All right. Just one quick, I know it's fall, but a quick, I'm looking forward to winter or just looking forward to winter. Any idea if girls hockey is going to have to be a co-op again or are we going to have enough?
This will be the, oh, so this will be the second year of their two-year co-op.
Two-year, okay.
Yep. And we also have, gymnastics is going to be doing a co-op. So gymnastics is back.
Awesome.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, sir. You might make kickoff unless you- Goodnight.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Goodnight.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we get back into order. Thanks for accommodating that. Next up is superintendent's update.
Okay. A couple of things for your consideration tonight. I put in the packet an overview of the strategic planning process. It took a little while. I reached out to probably five or six different firms and facilitators. And I've selected Dr. Ruth Gilbert Whitner, who's the retired superintendent of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District to facilitate our district's strategic planning process. I put some links there of, of some of her prior work in a couple other districts, but she uses something called the Planning for Success Strategic Planning Model, one that's strongly endorsed by DESI. I, I'm, I'm really looking forward, we're looking to kick this off right after the start of the school year. We're probably talking about five-month process, seven sessions in total, four that would be involving the, a core planning committee. So we're probably talking about 30 individuals that represent every single different stakeholder group. Obviously, if you're involved, if you're interested and want to be involved in this process, please let me know, because obviously we want school committee representation in kind of crafting this. I really do wish Sue was here, because every time we're presenting our district action plans or school improvement plans, Sue always points out, "Well, can we talk about specific outcomes?" Something about the Planning for Success process is it's very much nailing down specific outcomes year to year of what you want to achieve as a district. So really, really looking forward to that.
Any questions? Just looking at the calendar dates, when do you expect those meetings to be? Because those are, those all seem to be on, four of those six dates are school committee nights.
We are planning a kind of a mix of morning, afternoon and evening.
Okay. I'm just looking at specifically the two January dates in budget season caught my eye, but-
Yeah.
All right. We'll look forward to more.
Second piece is-
Last question. When are you going to start doing the outreach for selecting interested members?
Probably next month.
Okay.
Second piece, just for your own edification, I shared with you, we received last week, the NESDEC enrollment projection report. This one is kind of like the follow-up. After they receive our data of how many kids we actually have as October 1st enrollment, they say, "Okay, this is what we predicted last December. This is how many you actually have." I think they were off by something like 50-ish, which is a little bit on the big side. They were projecting 50 lower than we actually have as our official October 1st enrollment. A few slides, and again, I know we've talked about this, but their projection in looking at 10 years out kind of shows very, very stable enrollment. Again, looking at your first five years out, because those kiddos are actually alive now versus years six through 10, is a little more challenging. Again, if you look at historically, going back 10 years to the 14, 15 school year, to where we actually are now in 24, 25, and then what they're projecting out does show stability. I like this graph because it kind of shows a different way, but it shows a breakdown K through six, then middle school, and then high school. And you'll actually see some of the projections show some increases at the elementary grades, but again, kind of a flattening and in some places, a decrease in nine through 12. This is a super complex problem. I do think we can have additional years where we actually add students versus what they're projecting. But I share a, a couple pieces of data with you that this is towards the back of the report. And I would call a couple things that, one, a challenging piece about Sandwich is looking at housing. This is obviously a crisis all throughout Cape Cod, but when you look at how many units are actually being billed for new housing, the prices of housing within our community, that's a challenge. I also, something that we generally don't share on October 1st, but I'd like you to see, is the data around what other options families are looking at. Okay? So if you look at the data of first, that upper table, nine through 12, career and technical education, those are the students going to upper Cape Tech. There's a small handful that go to Cape Tech as well. As you can see, that number has gone up dramatically. If you look at the fourth column, that is K-12 choice out, those represent not only kids that are choicing to other districts, but by and large, students that are choicing to charter schools. Okay? So the reality is, I think our number is something like 40 students are actually choicing to other public school districts. So do some math, about 218 or so are opting for various charter schools as well. But again, if you're looking at the nine through 12 conversation, a, a bigger draw has been the career and technical schools as well. As you can see, just in the span of five years, it's gone from 129 to 177 students. Any questions on that data? Well, one more piece. Realize we have a national piece here where enrollment is going down, looking at projections across the United States in the span of the next 10 school years, looking at a decrease of about 5.5%. But here in Massachusetts, down projected to be negative 7.2%. So this is a Sandwich issue and I think we control the things that we can control and we do everything as part of the cycle of continuous improvement to improve our schools, but realize this is a challenge and it's a very, very complex problem. Any questions on any of that?
Left everybody speechless. I mean, certainly not going to fix the table tonight. That last slide is very, if you look through it, it's, it's demographics, it's economics, because if you read, the drop in the south is far less than it's going to be in the northeast. And that's economically driven because the costs are lower in the south than they are in the northeast.
I would invite you, if you really, really want to geek out, if you go into, and this is a public document, my background notes, I, I got a little link happy this week and there's a zillion links in there. But one of the resolutions that you'll be considering had to do with rural schools. And I put a link in there to a report that was done, I want to say, two or three years ago by the Massachusetts Commission on Rural Schools. And believe it or not, Barnstable County is considered to be a rural county. And I would invite you to geek out and go to page 40-something of that report. And I would invite you to geek out and go to page 40-something of that report, and it shows the enrollment decreases of various districts that are in the rural counties. And Sandwich and Nextdoor Mashpee are shown the change in population, I think it's from 2002 to 2022. And it's stunning. I think Sandwich lost 37% of our enrollment, but right next to us is Mashpee at something like 34%, if you go to that report. So, again, we have our unique challenges, and again, I stand by, we control the things that we can control, and we do everything to constantly improve our programming, but this is a complex issue.
Well, 2000, there was a big, big building boom. People moved here, had their families, and the kids are off in college and beyond, and they say, hey, I have a house on the Cape, and they haven't moved, in many cases. We are also the, I believe, the second oldest county in the country after, like, I think it's Palm Beach, Florida. So, average age. Anyway, any other questions? Okay, moving on to next, old business. The gift that keeps on giving, the MASK Annual Joint Conference Delegate and Alternate Nomination. So, we do need a delegate who will represent us and vote on our behalf, and vote the, what's going to be the expressed will of the committee for the resolutions that follow. Would anybody who's attending like to be our delegate?
Like to be?
Willing to be, how's that? I'll rephrase it.
Willing, willing. If someone else is more willing, I'm okay.
Okay. Well, then you can arm Russell with the alternate. So you're willing to be the delegate? Is that what I'm hearing?
Don't ask the question twice.
Okay. I'll accept a motion to have Burt be our delegate.
Motion. I would love to make a motion to nominate Burt as our MASC delegate for this year's conference.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nada, second by Ms. Brown, before he has time to change his mind. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passes 5-0-1. We do need an alternate as well. Sue is not here, and she's an abstentia, so we could throw her somewhat on the tracks. But I don't know if anybody else is willing to do it. Ms. Goodwin is willing. I'll accept a motion and Ms. Goodwin be our alternate.
I move that Tracy is our alternate representative to delegation.
Second.
Second by Ms. Benanda. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes 6-0. Okay, we move, so, our, thank you both, Burt and Tracy. You get a treat for that. You can pass the brownies down to Tracy for being the alternate. Okay, next up is the joint conference resolutions. Hopefully everyone has time, a chance to review it. Dr. Maruszek did, you know, provide some context just on his expertise. What I recommend we do, we'll do them one by one. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I think we, for simplicity's sake, I would ask that every motion be to support the resolution, so we're not voting yes for what would be a no, if that makes sense. So, if we vote yes, it means we support whatever this resolution is. If we vote no, we don't support it. Is that clear for everybody?
Yeah, and I'm bound to, I vote the way...
You're supposed to vote for us, yes.
Right, okay.
You're supposed to represent our will, yes.
I will.
So, the first one is the development of a no alternate to a high test, or, excuse me, development of an alternate to high-stake MCAS test. If I paraphrase, and Dr. Maruszek, you can correct me, it basically says, get rid of the MCAS, and then sometime in the future, find out something else, but it does not provide an alternative as presented.
That's correct. I think, as I say in the background notes, I think we could get on board that we would love to see an alternative, something that's more holistic for kids and so on, however, it has the caveat that Massachusetts should enact a moratorium on MCAS testing effective immediately. If you guys recall, a year ago at this time, I think the same exact resolution was put forward, and if my memory serves me correctly, I think the whole resolution got tabled because there was considerable debate during the business meeting over that specific caveat.
Before we go any further, just for anybody in the audience or anybody at home, I should have probably clarified this earlier. We are voting on these resolutions, this goes to the MASK conference, where the collective of the Association of School Committees vote, and this becomes kind of the legislative, it just provides the opinion of MASK as a body. It does not, none of this is actually binding or going to change policy or law. There's a lot more wickets that go through to do that, but just for anybody who's wondering what we're doing here. So, I'm sorry. Christine.
I was just going to say that, you know, certainly it's different than ballot question two right now. It's not eliminating MCAS as a graduation requirement, it's eliminating MCAS altogether with no alternative. Again, I continue, just like I did last time, to not support this question because, or this resolution, because as Dr. Maruszek said, there's no plan in place, there's no interim. Right now, it is the only measure, comparable measure of school success, so.
When you say you're going to come up with the plan later, it means that plan's probably never going to happen.
It's a concept of a plan.
Yeah.
I'd be on the opposite side of that. I would vote to get rid of any testing like this. Well, I will vote however the committee wants me to vote. But that's, you know, as we're debating, as we're debating. I have a question to ask. Assume the committee takes a position opposite of what I personally think, so when we debate it, I know how I vote, but I can't debate the opposite of what I would vote. Is that correct?
You have to represent...
You're supposed to represent us.
Represent your...
And also a quick question. So this is going to happen the day after the election, this meeting. So, people have already gone to the polls and voted about the MCAS. So, this is basically the MASC gathering everyone's votes and seeing what they can lobby with the legislature down the road in the next year. So, I don't think it's going to make a difference, but they don't have a plan in place, so I think we should vote how we voted last year. That's just my opinion.
Okay. I will, and again, for simplicity's sake, if I got to ask the vice chair to do all the motions and just support the resolution, and if we vote it down, but that way, we're, again, we don't want to have the motion against it, and then we vote yes, and people get confused. Because I'll get confused writing this down and recording it, as will Lisa. This is about Lisa's needs, so.
Okay.
So...
Any other questions?
We can always, there's always discussion after the motion.
Okay, okay. So, I guess we're going to vote in favor, all of those in favor...
Just make a motion to...
Oh, okay. I would like to make a motion for Resolution 1, the development of an alternative to the high-stakes MCAS test. So, are we going to vote those?
Any discussion? Motion is second. All in favor? All opposed?
I want to go back in favor.
Okay. I'll do the revote. Anyone in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the vote is 1, 5, 1 for that one, so our view is no.
Actually, that's going to be 1, 4, 1.
I stand corrected, 1, 4, 1. I can't do math tonight. I can't take the, I wouldn't pass the math MCAS. Anyway, next one up is the increase of compulsory attendance age. Basically, it would change the compulsory age to 18 by 16. I don't know if there's any comments from the soup.
As I said, I think this is a difficult one to argue against. I think here in Sandwich, you know, our dropout rate is very, very small, and, you know, the dropout rate across the Commonwealth is not very large. So, in theory, it's difficult to argue against this, however, the information that's missing here is if this were to be enacted by the legislature, making compulsory attendance to the age of 18, do we know that we have appropriate alternative programming for those students that, you know, wouldn't be dropping out as a result? So, it's a little bit of a challenge. You know, I think the intent behind this is positive, you know, and again, I think some of the statistics are cited as far as the economic power of dropouts, you know, the pipeline to criminal justice, and so on.
Okay, so, I'd make a motion on resolution to increase in compulsory attendance age, so it would be resolved, the MASC recommends that the mask legislature increase the compulsory attendance age from 16 to 18.
Motion by Ms. Nada, second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? I hear everything the superintendent's saying, but I also would, most importantly, the last part, we lose those kids at 16, we're not serving them all, I think, as a community, state, nation. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Did you vote, Christine?
Didn't vote, sorry. I was still thinking.
Didn't mean to rush you. All in favor?
Vote in favor.
Okay, we pass 6-0. This is when I think, oh, number three is the safe storage of firearms. This is the one that was here last year. This talks about putting it upon the superintendent to do community outreach about gun safety. And I won't even put the soup on this one, I just, we hire the superintendent to do a lot of things. I don't think this is in his job description, nor does he necessarily have the expertise to speak to it. That's derogatory on the superintendent, but that's not why we hire our superintendents. It's a great thing for the chief of police to do, I just don't think it's a school thing.
And I just wanted to comment, last year during this, it had come up, and Sue's notes from last year, when she was our delegate, no vote was taken after much discussion, and an amendment that the superintendent will work with local law enforcement agencies with regard to communication of their matters related to the safe storage of firearms. It got tabled pretty much last year, so it's back again.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion on Resolution number three on the safe storage of firearms.
Motion by Ms. Nada, second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Did you...
I was opposed, I'm sorry.
Okay, that fails 6-0. Next up, number four. School Bus Stop Alarm Surveillance Act and Enforcement Penalties. I think this was, to summarize this, would allow the police to, we would support the idea of the police being allowed to issue tickets based on bus cameras and things like that for people that break the law and pass a bus while it stopped. Did I summarize that correctly?
That's correct. What this would enable would be a resolution urging the legislature to enact legislation that would enable video surveillance on buses to catch cars that pass the bus when the arm is out and students are boarding or leaving the bus.
I'll take a motion.
Okay. I make a motion on Resolution 4, School Bus Stop Armed Surveillance Act and Enforcement Penalties.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Benanda, and second by Mr. Fisher, this is going to make, will you guys keep doing this? It's easy typing for Lisa, cut and paste. Okay, any discussion? Okay, seen none. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes 6-0. Come with gas. Number five, this is where we get bogged down, and my head starts to hurt, and I will defer to the superintendent to kind of explain some of these. Resolution 5 is aligning taxing authority with the retired local contribution.
Okay, I'll give you guys the Reader's Digest version of this, because it does have some complexity, but essentially, what this would do, would it be, every year when we receive something called our cherry sheets, which has how much we're getting in additional chapter 78, there's something called the minimum local contribution, okay? And specifically, you'll see that number, and then you'll see how much it went up from the previous fiscal year. What this resolution says is, should your minimum local contribution go beyond what is required, how much you can get locally from Prop 2.5, the municipality should be able to exceed that Prop 2.5 amount. I heard a statistic that was a little bit stunning during lunch today. I had a meeting, a roundtable meeting. So here's some statistics. 291 districts in Massachusetts, 230 are just like us, they're considered to be minimum aid districts. Of those 230, 100 asked for Prop 2.5 overrides. Of the 100 Prop 2.5 overrides, 33 were successful. So it's a 67% failure rate just for FY '25. I think there's a lot of ways to look at this, and I kind of went back and forth in what I put in the background notes. Realize minimum local contribution is the absolute floor as far as what municipalities should be kicking into the school budget. And it manifests statistically, out of 291 districts, 281 meet it. It's only 10 that don't meet it. So that's one piece, that kind of, you know, and I literally said, hey, good luck with trying to basically have an end around on Proposition 2.5, you know? Politically, I think that's a real stretch. The flip side, though, is realize the state funding formula is antiquated, and districts like us that are not benefiting from the Student Opportunity Act, and again, the general rule of thumb is 80% of that SOA money is going to 20% of districts across the state, mostly urban and urban ring districts. The SOA, though, is changing the formula to drive up our minimum local contribution because it's taking into account how much things like health insurance, how much special ed expenses actually cost. So, you know, I think how this could play out is, I wouldn't be shocked if we see in the coming five to 10 years, some jumps in our minimum local contribution. Right now, it's not an issue in Sandwich, because I think our money is managed very, very well, not only on the school side, but on the town side. I think support for this is okay, but I also think this is a stretch, to be 100% honest.
And it's really, it's only the will of MASK, it doesn't mean the legislature, it requires, you know, it doesn't mean the legislature's just going to do it, so.
But, so, again, for the non-financially minded here, so this is suggesting that you be able to use the features of a Prop 2.5 override without it going to the town for approval?
Correct.
Essentially making a mandatory override if it's, I don't think it ever gets passed the legislature, it's just...
Right.
This was, in my previous district, which was a regional school district, this would be huge in the sense that, picture you have two communities with different amounts of wealth, and one gets hit with this enormous increase in minimum local contribution, and the other one doesn't. When you're in a regional school district, you have to levy the funds based proportionality on your enrollment, so it was always a nightmare. So there's many districts that would benefit from something like this. Again, I, the theory is good, the intent is good, but I'm also a pragmatist.
Does the legislature listen to this, to any of this?
MASC is another lobbying group, Bert, just like the MASs is...
Okay, I get to the lobbying group, but do they have any, anything, did you say juice? Perfect. Do they have any juice?
Uh...
Yeah, no.
Maybe you should ask in two weeks when you're at the conference. Maybe you should ask in two weeks, when you're at the conference, okay, Delegate Fisher?
I'll entertain a motion.
What do you, before you do that, what do you recommend, yes or no?
I would vote yes, I mean, yeah.
Well, can I ask a question to my fellow committee members? You know, is it our responsibility when we're voting on these resolutions to vote what's best for Sandwich, or what's best for all of the schools in Massachusetts? Like where, where?
It's what your conscience is on that, I mean, I, we do represent this, we do represent Sandwich School District and the Sandwich taxpayers, but it's, it's, you can, you can take a wider aperture as well. I look at this as somewhat aspirational, I don't think this is, us voting here is never gonna change the law at the State House, but it's saying, there's, what it, to me, as I read this, and maybe you can, if, if I'm off the mark, Soup can correct me, this is saying there's an issue that needs to be addressed.
Correct.
It's saying there, the current funding formulas mechanisms are not aligned with going forward, and it needs to be addressed. I don't think it's gonna, it'll never be replicated just like this in Mass General Law, it'll get, it'll be sausage making.
Okay, so I make a motion on resolution five, aligning taxing authority with the required local contribution.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Wake me up.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? I have four, four yeas, any opposed? Okay, passes four two zero. Support of legislation to improve the fiscal health of rural school districts. This one I did not, admit, I did not understand, so.
So there's a link, the aforementioned Sustainable Future for Rural Schools report, which I linked in my background notes. This resolution specifically that you're voting on is urging the legislature to have legislation that is commensurate with a series of recommendations that are in that report, most of which call for additional funding for rural schools. And the piece is, you know, if I had to have it in a nutshell, realizing that there is an economy of scale, when you are talking about a smaller school district, many of which are rural, that have enrollments of fifteen hundred or less, however, they have the same statutory requirements as larger districts that are much better well-funded, and have a lot more resources, and personnel, and so on.
Okay, I make a motion that, on resolution six, Support of Legislation to Improve the Fiscal Health of Rural School Districts.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Four two zero, it passes. Number seven, I get to turn the page, Fully Adjusting Chapter Seventy-eight for Inflation. I think Michelle's in favor of this one.
In the current chapter seventy formula, there is a cap for four point five, a cap of four point five percent, as far as an inflationary factor, that's applied to various program codes, student cost codes, and so on. This resolution has proved, basically would have what they're calling inflation catch-ups to be implemented in successive years, in the event that inflation exceeded that four point five percent. As I said in the background notes, this has been really problematic in the FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, and FY twenty-five budgets. I should note that MAS S does have its own legislative agenda in two-year cycles, the same exact item is on the superintendent's agenda.
Okay, I make a motion, resolution seven, Fully Adjusting Chapter Seventy-eight for Inflation.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes six zero. Number eight, Equitable Funding for Non-Regional School Districts with High Transportation Costs. This is another one that kind of made my head hurt a little bit, so I defer to Soup.
Surprise, surprise, this came from the Plymouth School Committee, I wonder why? But basically, this resolution talks about districts that may have very, very geographically large areas, and as a result, they have enormous transportation costs. Realize, right now, only regional school districts get any type of reimbursement from the state for transportation costs. All traditional districts like our own, you're completely on your own, as far as financing it. What this resolution would do is, it would basically create almost like a circuit breaker fund, if you had, in any given year, extraordinary costs related to regular transportation that you could apply for. No details, you know, as I said in my background notes, you could definitely get into some equity issues, but I think this resolution is a step trying to address escalating, crazy escalating costs of regular transportation.
So I make a motion, resolution eight, for Equitable Funding for Non-Regional School Districts with High Transportation Costs.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes six zero as well. That's kind of my read, but I wasn't really confident I was understanding it correctly, so thank you. Number nine, MSBA Grants Evaluation for Chapter Seventy-four. This is for Vo-Tech schools.
Yeah, so essentially what this is doing is it's recognizing that Vo-Tech and agricultural schools, generally speaking, are more expensive for construction than traditional comprehensive high schools, and certainly elementary schools. So this resolution calls on the legislature and the MSBA, or the Massachusetts School Building Authority, to create almost like a tiered evaluation system in pricing out costs for elementaries, comprehensive high schools, and Vo-Tech schools.
Okay, I make a motion, resolution nine, MSBA Grants Evaluation for Chapter Seventy-four.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes six, passes six zero as well. The last one, Expansion in Capacity in Chapter Seventy-four for Vocational Technical Programs.
So Chapter Seventy-four programs are very, very important, and I think there's very few of us who could argue with the success that our career tech schools across the Cape and across the Commonwealth have. My issue with this is just the blanket statement of expansion of capacity of current Chapter Seventy-four schools. Realize locally, that is indeed happening. I intentionally showed you that slide, as far as the expansion of what, the number of students that are going to Upper Cape Tech, and realize this is playing in the backdrop, and I, and I don't know, you know, if this was discussed at this table, going back even prior to the pandemic, there's been a high degree of controversy, and as a matter of fact, there's been lawsuits, there's been federal civil rights complaints filed against the enrollment process. I have a hard time with the language in this resolution, talking about specifically, Chapter Seventy-four schools serve a higher percentage of students with IEPs and 504s, and those who are more economically disadvantaged than sending districts. I think if you look objectively at the data, that is not true.
That caught my eye as well.
So, again, I understand the intent of this resolution, I think it's honorable, I think we need to have more Chapter Seventy-four-like programs in our districts, plain and simple, but I cannot support unbridled growth of these schools.
Ms. Fisher?
Having worked at a Chapter Seventy-four school for twenty-one years, our, I shouldn't say our, I guess, the, at Cape Cod Tech, the, the students that required special help, special sped, were about, almost forty percent. What's, what's, what is it at Sandwich?
Approximately twenty percent.
So, I don't know how you can think that, because in most of the schools I've had contact with, having been in the relationship with others, other vocational schools, their special needs were much higher, were always much higher, and the academics, students' performance generally, except this year at Cape Tech, were underperformed at the, on the MCAS test. So I don't know where you're coming up with that.
Be happy to share that data with you.
Okay, I would, I'd love, I would love to see it.
Sure.
I'll make a motion on resolution ten, Expansion in Capacity in Chapter Seventy-four Vocational Technical Programs.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we all opposed, so that's a no. So, just review, if you, one in your notes, if you want to mark your, in case you're curious, we are a no on number one. Number one is no, number two is yes, number three is no, number four is yes, five is yes, six is yes, seven is yes, eight is yes, nine is yes, ten is no.
Just wanted to make a comment, I'm voting, my vote no on, on resolution ten was to represent the people I'm, was voted to this position on, but I do think the oppo, I do think the opposite of it, but I realize I rep, as I'm going to at the, at this meeting, I'm going to represent the committee, and I don't necessarily have to agree with what was voted, but I just wanted to represent, I would have approved this, but I realize, you know, this is not, this is, voting no wasn't the best interest of Sandwich.
Okay.
Do we have to do anything with the expiring resolution?
No.
No, okay.
All right, next up is, moving on to new business?
Can I just, uh?
Oh, I'm sorry, other topics not recently anticipated by the chair, Ms. Benanda.
No, no, I was just gonna just quickly follow up, I just pulled from D E S I that Upper Cape Tech, their most recent reported data is twenty-one point eight percent students with disabilities.
You were fast with that, wow. Okay, new business. We already did the athletics update, so we're moving on to the approval of the successor contract for the superintendent's schools. I'll just, I'll provide a brief overview, we met an executive session at our last, after our last regularly scheduled meeting, to review and negotiate a successor contract for the superintendent. The terms of the contract are pretty much what they, the general language remains unchanged from his initial contract, other than that the subsequent term would be six years, which gives us stability, which I think is good for, I mean, obviously for personal, I'm sure he wants that personally, but more importantly, for our district, having stability, as we talk about strategic plannings, things like that, not just doing it, but then having the consistency and follow-through is vitally important for our schools and our community. The other, only other real change is, is the money, and it is consistent with the also recently negotiated teacher's contract. So the, the recent teacher's contract added an upper step, which included a two and a half increase, and then a two percent COLA, so that same four and a half is applied for the first year, and then a three point two for five, five percent COLA for FY twenty-seven, which is in line with the teacher's contract. After that, it would be negotiated based, basically, after we renegotiate teacher contracts, because we don't want to set precedence either way, was kind of the theory. And just for context, is salaries, you know, we have comparables of other superintendents in the region, and I'd just say we're, we're getting value for money, because actually, he's kind of on the lower end for the region, but I think, speaking personally, I've been pleased, and I think it provides him, provides us consistency and stability, but we're providing for him as well. So that's the general overview. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the specifics.
You have the actual dollar amounts?
Yeah, it's right.
It's in the, it's in the contract.
I know it is, but anybody watching this does not see what we're.
Well, the, I, I'll read it out, the contract is, and it's also a public document, so anybody can read it. So this past year, his, his salary was one hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-five. With the COLA increases, it would be two hundred and fifteen thousand three thirty-three for FY twenty-six, and I don't have the, I'm sorry, let me, I stand corrected, did the, he would have liked that, but I ain't gonna work. Two thousand, two thou, two hundred and eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five for FY twenty-six, that represents that four point five, and for FY twenty-seven is two hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three, which represents a three point two five COLA. And again, this is an entire, this, this document, as with all contracts of the school system, are public documents, anybody can review.
Make a motion, we approve the superintendent's contract.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Ms. Benanda, any further discussion?
I just, I just want to say, yeah, he's the lowest base salary of all superintendents on the Cape, so we appreciate all of your work, and the six-year contract will bring stability to our district. Thank you.
And we are also one of the highest performing districts on the Cape, if not the highest.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? It's good one.
Happy to be taking a vote on this in six years, like Danielle said, that consistency is awesome.
Thank you.
Any last discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
All right, any opposed? It passes six zero, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
I think we will actually defer the actual signing to the chair's return, unless it's needed beforehand.
Yeah.
Okay, she's better for the picture anyway, much more photogenic than I. All right, next up is other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Anyone? I have none, if anybody's interested.
We're not, are we on, we passed the superintendent's report.
Yeah, about an hour ago, what do you got?
That was one of the first things, remember, enrollment and strategic planning process?
Well, I did have a que, maybe I can bring that up during.
If you got a question, go ahead and ask it.
Okay. For some strange reason, this came to mind, and I, I'm not gonna say what, what occurred. At the Oak Ridge School, are the classroom doors locked?
Yes.
Why?
We received a order from our fire chief, it was actually a directive, that we could no longer use the magnet system that we'd used.
Is this, are these mag, now, at the Eddie School in Brewster, they have little magnet slides that they, is that what you use?
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay, and they don't lock there, they don't, I realize you don't, the fire chief in Sandwich is different than the fire chief in Brewster.
Correct. And his, and basically, the concern was, with fire code, if you are using those magnet strips as a device, the door does not appropriately latch. And if the door does not appropriately latch, it's a violation of building code.
I couldn't get through those doors when I go, when.
No, no, if, realize, if you have the magnet strip in place, the door.
You can open it, yeah.
Even though the door may be physically locked, it does not latch, so therefore.
That's correct, right.
So therefore, anybody can get back and forth.
So what's the problem, generally, as a substitute teacher, I like the door open, because I want the principal to feel comfortable to come, to come walking in, and anyone else to come walking in. What's, this sounds like an isolation problem, you know, you're isolating the kids in the classroom, and I assume if the kids are going to the, to the bathroom, they have to have someone come to that door to let them, this seems like a royal pain in someplace.
I don't feel like it's uncommon in school districts to have that be the case.
And realize, I don't disagree with exactly where you're going with this, Bert. This was discussed in depth at last Thursday's district safety team meeting, I am confident that the situation as we have it now is going to be short-term in nature. If you recall, through last year's budget cycle, and talking about the investment, the additional capital investment, we are planning on installing locks within the entire district, new locks for every single classroom door. Part of the issue of the concern of why the. Part of the issue of the concern of why, the irony is the directive did come from our fire chief and back in 2009, our fire chief is the person who brought these magnets to the district.
If I can just provide a little context, there was a joint memo from August, I don't know the date, it came from, it was a joint memo from the state fire marshal and the DESI acting commissioner, addressing this and talking about, I don't think it specifically mentions the, the strips, but basically, the wording was such that the door had to be able to lock shut and it, or has to comply with the building code. So, this was not, you know, the, the fire chief was taking some of his direction, you know, from the state. It wasn't, he didn't come up with this idea, just to provide a little clarity and context.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So, the concern is during any type of safety event or drill, right now, essentially, we are, will be looking for locks that have a lot more flexibility. And that will be the direction that we will be going.
During a fire drill, I know you, it's generally the common practice to close the doors, correct?
Correct.
Outside this lock issue, this, this lock issue. And, but you, when this is addressed, when locks are coming in, come in, well then, will the classroom doors be allowed to generally be open after, after you get these locks?
The classroom doors will be unlocked.
Unlocked?
Correct.
Okay, so the teacher can then choose whether to keep the door open? Because the only time I see doors closed is when there happens to be kids, or class, classes start going by, going out to recess, and it makes it very noisy. That's the only time I've seen classroom doors closed on, but, and I'm speaking, I was at school in Brewster, and when I was in Barnstable, they didn't close, they didn't lock, generally did not lock their doors.
I just had a question. Was the, when the fire chief, when we got this directive, was the legal authority stated on it, was there a CMR listed or a mask general law given about what, what made this happen so fast? Were they, did anybody give it, were there any, was it a building code? Was it a mask general law cited?
Yeah, mask general law was cited.
It was cited? And had to do with the locks, warlocks? Okay, okay.
Kevin, thank you for your patience on this.
It's all right, no, it's very valid. It's, I, and that's why I provided the context. It's, it's an issue that I think the Safety and Security Committee can tackle. There's, there's, I exhale, sorry, but, you know, the fact that this, the world we live in right now is incredibly frustrating and how do we find that balance is, is a challenge as well. And the one thing I will say, though I, I missed the last one, because I was out of town for work, that committee is very robust and very passionate on its work on trying to make these schools as safe and as secure for our kids and our staff as possible. And it's, like, I've been involved in the past couple of years and it's been very reassuring to see the commitment at those meetings. I'll also say, there's, I don't think the, the school system has a better partner in the safety and security and all the drills that we've run than our fire chief, so.
The amount of drills, we're leaps and bounds amongst all other communities in our area with safety. We have a plan in place for new locks.
We do, we do. And, and again, I don't want to get into all of the intricacy of.
Yeah, understand totally.
After that, yeah, if we go much further, we.
Reassuring knowing there's alternatives out there.
So, okay. Anybody else, I have nothing else? Okay, moving on to subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee, Facility Rental Fees for FY '25. I will lead off and then certainly if Michelle's got any comments or the soup. Chair of the finance, you're, I, you're looking at your chair of your Finance Subcommittee. One of the things we looked at, we had not looked at refreshing the, our rental rates for our various facilities since about 2015. So, obviously, we're a little bit behind the times. So, there was a concerted effort to, to cross comparisons with other towns and kind of normalize ours with, to be essentially market rate. There is a couple, so you can see all those numbers there. There are three classes. One is Class 1, which is basically school use, there's no charge. I got that right? Class 2 is 501-3Cs that are sandwich-based, that 100% serves sandwich kids. So, it's not, you know, a Barnstable charity, you know, nonprofit that's using sandwich facilities. Tier 3 is essentially a for-profit, you know, it might be a, a dance studio or something that is, you know, charges their kids fees and the, and the staff is paid and things like that. So, that's your three scales. This also does have a caveat where, you know, the, the pool is, we have our separate contract with currently Flying Fish or Aquasafe, excuse me. It also does allow the superintendent to make separate agreements with our larger users, including, the two main ones are Sandwich Youth Basketball and Sandwich Youth Lacrosse, that use our facilities, you know, for an extended season. And also the scouts that, the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts, which just use like the multipurpose room for various meetings. Charging them, so these rates are really more kind of like one-off rates versus if it's going to be extended use, we can, we have the authority to enter into a standing contract. We did, they did a lot of work on that one as part of this, where we said, we took the, the Subcommittee took the approach that for the nonprofits that support our kids, we should not be making a buck off them. Likewise, we shouldn't lose a dollar either. For those kids that play lacrosse or basketball or do scouts, you know, whose parents already pay for the schools and everything else, why are we paying, why are we taxing them essentially? Likewise, for those parents that don't have those kids doing that, they shouldn't be subsidizing it. So, how do we find that balance point in which, so the facilities did a bunch of work figuring out, okay, how much, you know, the school is this many square feet, the gym is this many square feet, we use this many BTUs, so how many BTUs go to the gym? Is it perfect? No. Is it a rough org or magnitude accurate, you know, it's a good faith estimate of what the utility costs are? Yes. And all those things were factored into any, and those things will be, how much does it cost to maintain all the fields? Well, I'll get a better estimate of that and those will be used in those contracts. So, again, we are kind of meeting the spirit of it's good for the program, which are, for the, those youth programs, which are good for our kids, but it is keeping sandwich public schools whole. And then the thing I did not mention, it also includes essentially a factor for wear and tear and usage, you know, because the floor has to get resurfaced if it's basketball, the sea, the fields need to be reseeded if it's lacrosse, things like that. I'm probably spoke that too long, so anything you want to add to that?
No, I just, I think the, the fees that you see there are very, very reasonable. I think the second tab that's in that spreadsheet shows, I think, seven of our neighboring districts what their charges are. We looked long and hard at, you know, what would the average be, you know, taking into account? And then, you know, again, keeping things very, very reasonable, but also knowing that it's been nine years since this has been visited by the school committee.
Ms. Brown?
So, we have not gotten to Policy KF yet, but that's Community Use of School Facilities, saying that the other organizations that would be exempt from fees would be official sandwich, town-wide activities, voting, Sandwich Water District, emergency service departments, police, fire, and blood drives. Is that still encompassed within that list?
It'd be Class 1.
Okay.
Mr. Fisher?
It looks like a lot of work was done on this. Just to rec, recognize, who's on the Finance Subcommittee, because this looks like a lot of work.
A lot of work was done for us, though we did do some. It is myself, Sue Miller, and Ms. Tracy.
Thank you, thank you. It looks like a lot of work was.
I'm just looking at the auditorium that, I mean, it, it looks like it's stayed pretty stable and we're well below average. Is there, was there a specific rationale for that? Or are we just trying to keep things reasonable, not jump too much the first time we revisit pricing?
So, that's a great question. There are a couple power users and we actually have a outside dance, Royal Dance Company that comes in, in July, which is a significant moneymaker for the district. And we tried to keep things level in that area.
Got it.
Make our money off them, but not price ourselves out of it and they, they go elsewhere and then we lose that revenue. Probably the way to caption. Any other questions? A vote is required to approve this. This is some background and notice, we haven't done this in nine years. This was on my to-do list last year when I was actually sitting in this chair full-time, never quite got to it. But like our colleague of the Select Board, Mr. Holden, the, the Select Board every year approves fees, whether it's what you're paying for your transfer sticker or your beach sticker. This is something that we should be doing as well. So, we will, this is going to be added to the agenda and this will, and, you know, this took a big refresh. Next, next year, this will be a very small lift, there'll probably be a slight increase for inflation, but it's not going to be a research project like it had to be this year.
I make a motion, we approve the facility rental fees for FY '25.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Ms. Brown. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 6-0. Thank you on that. Just for your awareness, the second piece the Finance Subcommittee was looking at, but has not got there yet, is, you know, Mr. Donovan was here earlier, we were looking at activity fees. We've had this discussion, and I know Sue's pretty passionate, like, I'd love to be in a perfect world where we didn't charge activity fees. We don't live in that world, unfortunately. And we also have not increased our fees in that same nine years. I'm not saying we need, we're going to, or whatever, but we just, what we need as a committee is a full understanding of what, how much that, those activities cover, what percentage they cover of both athletics and also the various clubs, because, you know, they have a night's pass for whatever it is, $80, I think, you know, to, does that cover the stipend? And does it not? Or do we want to, maybe we just incorporate it into the operational budget and we make that conscious decision, but that's something we should, we should understand what we're doing and not be surprised at the end of the fiscal year. So, more on that to follow, just, you're aware that that work's happening as well. And that's where the real work, there's a lot of work there, you know. Some schools charge different tiered rates for sports, like, you know, the cost to run a cross-country team's a little bit less than a hockey team or, or a football team. And again, I don't know where we'll, we'll be, but those are things that eventually we need to kind of at least consider and look at, so. Next up is enough of me talking, I defer to the Chair of the Policy Subcommittee.
I'll try to brief, as brief as possible. Section G is the, so this is the second reading on Section G policies. And this was a big section regarding personnel. So, minor changes in a lot of policies, there was a lot of redundancy or some situations where there were two policies that had been combined into one, so there was a lot of adjustment that way. There are a few new policies that we adopted as recommended by MASK in terms of personnel use of technology, including a domestic violence leave policy, family medical leave, which both of those can reflect more current law. We did elect to not include some policies or delete ones that were kind of overstepped specifically, what's the category of staff? The, what would be the administrative staff, so things that were typically negotiated in contracts, we didn't, we chose not to include those as specific policies. Our biggest, one of our biggest changes was in the evaluation policy and we went to adopt a policy kind of modeled by Cambridge Public Schools, just because the, the policies that not only that were existing, but also MASK had, didn't truly reflect the actual educator evaluation process that DESI recommends and is, and is used in Sandwich, so it's a more general policy in that regard. I think that's it for biggest changes, but otherwise, there were a lot of updates to legal citations and policy citations and a lot of kind of condensing everything. Questions about any specific fascinating G policies?
I'll entertain a motion. And we'll just do it as all of Section G. We're not going to do each individual one.
I make a motion that we approve the G, G folder policies tonight as.
Presented.
Presented.
There you go.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Benenda, second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? I'll just simply say that if you thought there was a little bit of work done on the Finance Subcommittee, you hadn't seen nothing yet till you see the work that's done on this committee. This, this is, we're only on G. J is coming and that's the, that's the monster. But this is a lot of work, but I think it's, once we get through this, again, kind of like the, the fee schedules, maintenance will be easy. And as long as we keep up with that maintenance, it'll be much easier. But as Christine said, in many cases, if, if it wasn't valuable, we got rid of it, not to create clutter. If it, if, if a contract was going to supersede it, get rid of it, so. Any other comments?
Justin, we may be, I may be kicking myself for when Joe said, we could also hire someone from MASK to do this policy update for us. I'm like, no, we'll do it.
All for the bargain price of $13,000.
Well, there you go, that's our gift.
All right, hearing no more. Any, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes 6, no abstentions, passes 6-0. Next up is Liaison Advisory Committee Reports. Oh, Ms. Benenda?
I just had one, last night, there was a, the Basic Rights Workshop presented by Christine Riley for the CPAC, so it was Zoom. There were a few attendants, a few attendees. It was great, very informative as always.
Okay, warrants.
I make a motion that we approve the warrants that were signed, they're all signed.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Benenda, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 6-0. Moving on to public forum, would anybody like to come up to public forum? I had a hunch you might. I think we know where you live at this point.
Never saw him before, man.
Mr. Holden?
Good evening, Charlie Holden, 35 Lakeview Drive, the liaison of the Select Board to the school committee. I would just like to take this opportunity to congratulate Dr. Marushak on the approval of the successor contract for six years, from July 1st '25 to June 30th '21. It'll be great to work with you, to resolve the, any outstanding issues that we may have. And it'll be a good six years, I believe, Doc. And I would also like to mention Will Lodge, my gosh, what a young man. That's, that's an awesome litany of accomplishments, what a guy. And then lastly, the municipal fee public hearing is tomorrow night. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holden. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, moving on to future agenda items. It was, we will do follow-up on the, the tennis court, based on Mr. Fisher's comments earlier. Probably part of a greater facilities update.
Yeah, just a couple to share with you. Shreya, our rep, is also co-president of something called the Playbook Initiative that is being implemented at the high school this year, actually middle high school in Oak Ridge, is something that comes to us from Project 351 and it's a very strong anti-bullying, anti-harassment program. So, she and her co-leader are extremely excited to present to the committee. And then we also have a group of parents, middle high school parents, who are very actively involved, who would like to co-present. actively involved, who would like to co-present with Mr. Dave DiCanto in some conceptual ideas that they have for kind of the rehab of DiCanto Stadium. If you've been out there, you know we don't have facilities, which are a challenge, but they're also looking for a second turf field as well, and they have some conceptual designs that they'd like to share with the committee.
Okay.
Great. Would it include a bathhouse?
It certainly would. That's what I was saying, facility. Be polite.
Yes.
Yeah.
I've heard that from a few people lately.
Just a couple.
I had one acknowledgement if I could.
We're not there yet. We're still on future agenda items.
We're still... Oh, jeez.
Anyone else? Acknowledgements, Ms. Benenda?
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge, we have someone retiring in the district next week, our security officer, Michael Miller. He started working here in 2005 as a substitute teacher, and he was a former police officer in the U.S. Air Force, and he became a school security officer in the district in 2013. So, he's often the first face you see when you pull into Oak Ridge or Forestdale at drop-off. He's at every sporting event, every football game, you see him in the gym. So, he's finally retiring, so I wanted to wish him well and congratulate him for all of his hard work and devotion to our schools.
I would second that. Anyone else? Seeing none? I would just also thank you and congratulations to Mr. Miller, and again, congratulations, and you get to stick around for a little bit longer. Dr. Marushak, the other announcement I have is, it's currently 1-1, still towards the end of the first half of the girls' soccer game. So, we can go there after that if anybody wants under the lights for senior night. And that is all I have. Adjournment? The next business meeting, we will... I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I should have moved into a... But Dr. Marushak and I talked a little bit about this. The next meeting occurs at the same time that we have...
I was getting to that. Unless there's a pressing need, we will probably defer the next meeting to what would be November 20th, because this is the same night as the MASC conference, where both the superintendent and a couple members are going to be there. If there is some pressing issue, we can still meet, but if there's nothing that we... Other than warrants, we'll have to coordinate that properly offline to get the signatures, but we will likely defer to our next meeting to November 20th if something more pressing comes up. What... As long as we have a quorum, we will meet, and, you know, Dr. Quinn could rep for the superintendent. So, that's all I have. Take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting until our next meeting, Wednesday, November 20th, at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Benenda, second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussions? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.